Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the CalSTRS Board Meeting. Jennifer, would you take the role, please?
First, for the State Controller, Ms. Taquen.
Here.
Superintendent Thurman.
Here.
Mr. Prizan.
Here.
Ms. Yamamoto.
Here.
Mr. Tang.
Here.
Ms. Hendricks.
Here.
Ms. Bradford.
Here.
Ms. Erdin.
Here.
Mr. Gunny.
Here.
For the State Treasurer, Mr. Lupino.
Oh, present.
And for the Leader of Peer Finance, Ms. Miller.
Here.
Chair President Keely, you have a quorum, and I have a short statement on public speaking. The CalSTRS Board meetings are live web-streamed, video archived, and available to the public on calstrs.com. Individuals who wish to address the Board should wait for the 10-minute public comment period at the end of the agenda item the speaker wishes to address. For comments not pertaining to a specific agenda item, there will be an opportunity for additional statements at the end of the open session. Each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes to comment. However, if there's not enough time for each speaker to have three minutes, the timing will be at the discretion of the chair. To protect the privacy of speakers under the age of 18 who wish to address the Board, only their first name and affiliated organization may be provided, but other personal identifying information, such as their last name, age, or school, may not be shared. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Thanks, John. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with some flexibility.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Without objection, the agenda has been approved with some flexibility. We'll go directly to our video. Series four. Year one, series four.
When I was a kid, I thought I wanted to be a designer, and I wanted to design cars and buildings. And I thought that's right where I wanted to go. But then I ended up coaching a softball team, and I just loved working with kids. So I've now been a teacher with my own classroom for 19 years in the same district, Colston-Cordova. I have taught, including summer school. I've taught kindergarten through sixth grade. And I'm currently in fifth grade. I actually teach a four- or five-combo. And I'm loving teaching upper grade. I always think that the best place to make a difference with individual kids is up close to them in the classroom. This is where the hardest work will always happen. You know, you come in thinking you know everything and can change the world, and you quickly realize that you don't. As a student, I didn't always feel successful. And it wasn't until college that I really felt like I knew how to do school and was a good student. And so I wanted to work with kids and not have them ever go through that experience that I went through and help bring out their talents. And so I'm currently on a nonprofit board with a whole group of phenomenal women called West SAC Play, where we help our West SAC parks. One of the moms there said, "Let's start a Girl Scout troop for our girls." And we did. And she was the leader at the beginning. And then eventually, we rotated over. And so I'm now a co-leader, and I have been for many years. And it's a really great way to build up our girls. When I think of the benefit the teachers have, I think about freedom. That's what educators expect going into it. And we know that, you know, our pay might not be at the same place as some of our friends in other professions, but we know that the benefits will be there when it comes to retirement. And if new teachers especially go on and look at 403B compare, they'll see the options that are there. And for me, the best benefit was CalSTRS Pension Two. So not only do I have my CalSTRS, but I also have my, moved my 403B that had really high fees into a much better program. We know that when we put money in early, and the best time to invest was yesterday, and so the next best time is today. And I think of my younger self, who, those first paychecks, oh, it was so hard to get a paycheck once a month, I remember. And so those early years, they were hard financially. But I would tell myself to really think about how I could invest in my future, even if it was just $25 a month or $50 a month, to invest in myself over time. I'm exactly halfway through. I'm 19 years in, and I probably have another 19 to go. I think retirement for me will definitely be volunteering, and it will definitely be traveling, and hopefully continuing to give back. STIRS is a big organization. And I know that there is a heavy weight on their shoulders. It's a very big responsibility because we are all counting on them. And it's important that they don't lose touch of a classroom. West Sacramento is where I serve as Board President, and it's right there where STIRS is. And we would love to welcome them into classrooms to visit as well. But mostly, I'm grateful for them as well. So I want to make sure that they hear a thank you.
Thanks again to the communications team, all the people behind the scenes who make that possible. And I know all of us probably know teachers, educators that could be featured in our videos. So if you have someone that you think you'd like to be featured, please make sure you get their name and contact information to Karen, and we'll continue to build this library of exceptional people who do the work of teaching and educating our children in the state of California. So thank you very much. Cassandra, we'll turn right over to you.
Thank you, Chair Keely. I wanted to provide the Board an update on the work that we're doing relative to innovation in the organization. If you remember, the innovation and progressive approach in setting innovation practices in the organization has been part of the strategic plan that we put together for the '22 through '25. Oh, I'm not using this yet. Twenty through to '25 strategic plan. And we've been working with the Board in developing, we worked with the Board in developing the content for the strategic plan on innovation. We discussed, it was part of the topics that we discussed over the last several offsites with the Board in deciding what type of a role the Board wanted to play in leading innovation in the organization. And this was one of the priorities that they had identified that they wanted to participate in and have a fingerprint in how we move innovation forward in the organization. So we are still in the assessment phase of this work. We have contracted with vendor Accenture to help us conduct the assessment. We issued a DNA survey to parts of the organization where we want some of the framework to be included from the content that staff leaders in the organization can provide to us as we start framing the work that we're going to be taking on ahead of us. So from this, executive staff are going to be working with the consultant group and having some offsite meetings to really start identifying some of the details and plans moving forward. From that framework, we're going to be gathering that and bringing that to the Board at the offsite this July and have a workshop and exercises with the Board to partner with, between the executives and the Board on how we advance it moving forward. So we're looking forward to the work and what we're going to be learning from what we've surveyed, from staff and from the leaders of the organization, and are excited to get that executed. That was it. Passing it over to me now?
Yes, I'm passing it over. Please.
I'm going to give you your update on the HQE. The project is at 92.8% complete. Last time I met with you, it was at 87%. So it is making some really good progress. We're very, very close. So there's some really good detailed construction activities that were in your board materials, so I'll just highlight a few. Site work has been underway, so you'll notice that there's sidewalks now that are poured around the building itself. The Third Street side is really coming together. There, the awning, that's going to be the walkway on Third Street, has been installed. And all the equipment and materials on that side of the building have been removed. And all of the areas where the man lift was in place are actually being closed in with the glass. So all of that is continuing really nicely. The exterior patio concrete at the childcare center has been poured, and the glass enclosure stanchions, to make sure that they're protected, are all going in now as well. The bridge is really coming along nicely. All the glass enclosure is completed. All the framing inside of the bridge is complete. And they're really working on the connection point between our existing building and the bridge as it flows over to our new building. And really, the most impressive piece, I think, of the building is the atrium, and it's really coming along nicely. All of the glass has been installed in the atrium. There's three levels of wood that has been put into it. There's some more work that needs to be done, but by mid-May, all of the scaffolding will come down, and we'll really get to realize that space because that really is the cornerstone of the new building. It's where we'll all gather and have lots of good meetings and celebrations there, which is great. The ventilation system has commenced, so we've got air handlers that are working in the building. And the Phase One PV project was completed. You'll notice, if you drove in, there's all these PVs that are now, have been installed on the top level of our parking garage. And once they get hooked up, we'll begin using them and actually getting the benefits of the energy that those will provide to CalSTRS. And while very good progress continues to be made, the substantial completion date of the project continues to slip. So last time, when we came in March, the date of the substantial completion was June 8. In your materials, you saw a date of July 6. And a date that was just provided to us on Monday with a new schedule that was dropped is the end of July. And so DPR continues to cite the difficulties with the inspection process and the most recent rainy period as reasons for the continued delays. So we continue to monitor any budget implications associated with the schedule delay on a weekly basis. And then on the leasing front, I wanted to give you a quick update. We do have two potential tenants that have interest in our building. We've responded to both of the RFPs. Both of these companies want one full floor. One actually wants one floor and a quarter. What we're doing right now is we're taking the floor plans they've provided to us, and we're pricing them with our own local architect to determine what the cost would be to perform those tenant improvements. And then we'll be catering back to them with information once we find out what those costs will be. So that's really great. One is for a five-year term, and another is for a 10-year term. So I'll keep you informed on both of those as they progress. And that's all I have for you. If you have any questions for me, I'll take those now.
Ms. Whitaker?
Oh, I think it's Ms. Miller. I aspire to be Ms. Whitaker. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Just in terms of, I think, at what point do we have our contractors speak again? Just about, we talked about getting a more precise timeline from them. So we'd love to continue to see that. I think we asked for that a couple Board meetings ago. We haven't seen it yet. I do think it's just important that we, I appreciate the 92%, and I know that this 8% is the hardest, but do think that they should be providing that at this point to the Board, especially because we're close to some change orders. So with that, have there been any change orders in terms of a budget? Is the first question. And then second, just in terms of the leasing, is do we have, are there alternative plans for vacant floors? Should they not be able to be leased? Have we started to sort of think creatively as many folks in Class A commercial buildings are starting to do?
Yeah. So first, for your first question, we actually do have DPR in the audience.
Great.
So if we'd like them to come up to the microphone now, I think Nils is here, and he can provide you an update on the schedule and what they're doing to mitigate the schedule.
Great, thank you. And just that schedule maybe in writing, sir, that we spoke about two meetings ago? You were going to get us a substantial completion and make sure that it's actually documented, I think, at this point for the Board would be super helpful.
Absolutely. And I think, I think when we walked away from our last meeting, I think we followed what we thought we owe, but we can certainly absolutely provide what you're requesting. I guess as an introduction, I'm Nils Womquist, Business Unit Leader for DPR, and this is...
I'm Eric Simpson, Project Executive for the project with DPR.
So we're, we are really excited. I think, you know, you said it well. You know, you get down to this last push to the finish. And it's, it's the last seven, eight percent of the job. It is a lot of work. We're working really just about on every floor of the building. I think with some of the, you know, kind of the extension of kind of the wet rainy season, you know, some of the site work's coming along a little bit later now. But you can really see it outside. I'm sure folks came in from the garage, but you can really see all the boom lifts starting to close up the south kind of prow end of the building. So we're everywhere and all over the building, and it feels good. So it really is the push to the finish. You know, we have, with some of the challenges that kind of been talked about, you know, we've been working six days a week for about a year. We are doing some seven-day-a-week work right now with some selective trades. We do need to be careful how much we do that from a safety and a productivity perspective, but we are doing that. And have continued to bring on some additional staff to help us push across the finish line. I think kind of looking forward, you know, really, you know, there's, you know, just a lot of areas that we need to complete. I think the, you know, one of the big things, Lisa mentioned the atrium, you know, we have, we're going to be into fire, life, safety, testing, and building commissioning, and test imbalance. And so that'll be when we're really turning a lot of the systems on, making sure they're active, making sure it's a safe place, and going through all the sign-offs and checklists to get that complete. So that's really going to be, I think, if you look at, you know, these next couple of months, you know, in about, you know, the next six to eight weeks, really, that's going to be a lot of the primary activities that are going to be happening, are going to be a lot of that fire, life, safety, testing, test imbalance, checkout kind of work. So, but, you know, we've, you know, maintained a crew of, you know, about 250 craft for, you know, I'm going to say...
Going on a year.
Going on a year. So we got a lot of folks out there and putting a lot of work in place. And look forward to the next Board meeting, being able to see the final, the final product, so.
So you expect August is the last sort of delay that we'll hear about?
Yeah, we're, so right now, our, we're, substantial completion is trending the end of July. So I think it's, you know, it's, we feel good about the schedule and the logic and what we have in there to do. It's always the unknowns are hard to predict, but that's, that's what we're trending right now, and we're doing everything we can to get there.
Great. So I appreciate that draft schedule that includes kind of the six-day-a-week keeping folks up. Obviously, safety is always the most important, and then just the drive to that substantial completion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you.
And as far as ultimate use, we are actually looking into that with our broker as to what, what other owners are utilizing their space for and determining whether that will work for us from a financial perspective. I am working with DGS as well because I know that the governor is pushing to have more people coming back into the building. Leadership was asked to come in at all agencies effective April 1. And on a GovOps call that I was on, there was actually some agencies that were saying that we've given up our space. So I am working and contacting Jason Kenny over at DGS to make sure they remember we're here because there might be an opportunity for us to use our space for drop-ins for those people that are required to come in a couple of days a week and they don't have a facility to go to. So we definitely want to make sure that that's an option that we have as well. So we're looking into that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Seeing no one else in the queue, turn it back to you, Cassandra.
That was all I had.
Terrific. Go to the next item. Item three on the agenda, which is the annual Board Chair and Vice Chair Elections. This is run by our CEO, Cassandra.
Thank you. Would like to accept nominations for the Chair position.
Recognize Ms. Hendricks.
I would nominate Harry Keely for Chair.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations, Chair Keely, for another term.
Congratulations, too.
And with that, I would like to open it up for nominations for the Vice Chair position.
I nominate...
You have to time in.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Oh, okay, you're gonna...
I just kind of raised my hand. Sorry. Mr. Tang?
I'd like to nominate Sharon Hendrick for Vice Chair.
It's nomination for Ms. Hendricks to be the Vice Chair, but I think Sharon may have other ideas this year.
I actually was going to nominate Denise Bradford for a Vice Chair this year. I appreciate my colleague's nomination. I, as has been our practice, I don't want to go too far afield, but has been our practice of rotating leadership over time. And in the spirit of our collegiality together, I wanted to nominate my colleague Denise Bradford, give her a chance with the Vice Chair position. So I'd like to nominate Denise Bradford.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved and properly seconded for...
For an alternative.
Right?
Nomination?
Yeah.
Okay, so any other nominations? Since I don't want to jump the gun on this one. Make sure. So all those in favor for Denise Bradford for the Vice Chair position?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Bradford.
Thanks, everyone. Moving right along. Looking forward to working with Denise. I want to thank Sharon. She's been an incredible Vice Chair and has become a good friend. And couldn't ask for a more supportive Vice Chair over the last few years. And I admire you, and thank you. I love you so much.
I love you, too.
Okay. Looking forward to working very closely with Denise as well. I thank the Board for your continued confidence in me. It's a great honor to be of service to the teachers of this state, the educators of this state. We have an incredible team. I would argue the best team in America. We have an unparalleled mission and purpose and focus. And it's, as someone once said, they, they used to have a dream to play professional football. And he got to be able to play professional football for a long, long time. And to be on this Board is a dream I wasn't even capable of having as a young person. And I'll never forget the teachers and the educators that have made it possible for me to serve on this Board. And so long as we stay focused on our mission and our purpose and empowering a great team, we're in good hands. So it truly is a team. And I appreciate your confidence in me to stay in this role for another year. Thanks so much. Cassandra, back to you.
Item four, actuarial.
This is our major action, today's work. Come on up. So as they're getting settled, this item, there are several portions to it. And there are resolutions that are action, item resolutions. And my recommendation is that we go through one by one, and then we'll take action after each item. Correct. Right? So we'll go for A, and then take action for B. Okay? David, I'll turn it over to you if you can introduce everyone.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. So this is our annual presentation of the actuarial evaluations of the CalSTRS Benefit Plans, Defined Benefit, Defined Benefit Supplement, Cash Balance Plans. And with me is, of course, David Lamuro, Deputy Actuary, and then Milliman, represented by Nikalia and Scott Peppernell. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to David, who's going to go over the slides that we have. Brief presentation. And be sure to ask questions as we go along. If you have questions.
And good morning, everyone. I'm actually going to let, first, I'm going to let Nick and Scott present the results of the valuation that they performed for the Defined Benefit Program, and then I'll jump in at the end when they're done with their presentation.
All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. The purpose of the valuation is to assess the funding status of the Defined Benefit Program as of the valuation date, which is June 30, 2022. And it is also to assess whether the contribution rates are on track to reach full funding by 2046 or sooner under the funding plan. So what we're looking at here is a history of the number of active members as of the last 20 years. I want to focus on, last year, when we were here talking to you, we were talking about a big decline, or about a 5% decline in number of active teachers. We've seen a nice post-COVID rebound here. We're back up right about 450,000 where we were a couple of years ago. We monitor the number of teachers pretty closely because the number of teachers really relates the number of payroll, and the payroll directly relates to the contributions you receive. I know you've heard a pretty extensive discussion about the importance of number of teachers and payroll on the funding plan from Rick and Dave at the, in the fall, when they present the risk report. So I won't go any more detail, and I will move on to the next slide. So really, there's two key outcomes of the valuation. First is assessing the funded status, and the second is looking at the contribution rates. So first, we're going to start with the funded status, and we measure that by the funded ratio. And you can see the funded ratio was last time 73%, and that's increased to 74%. And just to remind you, the funded ratio is the ratio of your assets. And for that, we use the smooth value of assets, which I think we've talked about in the past. And we compare that to the actual obligation, which is the value of the benefits that have been accrued as of the valuation date. So you see that increase, really, there's pretty much two factors. We have a detailed report where we kind of go into all the factors, but just kind of want to highlight two of them here. One is the investment return. Now, if you remember, the investment return for the year, fiscal year '21-'22 was actually a slightly negative return. And as actuaries, our target is 7%. So that's a pretty significant shortfall from hitting that 7% return. So that has a negative impact. But you'll also remember, since we smoothed, we haven't recognized all of the large gain from the fiscal year 2021. So when you take into account that and offset it with the recognition from the current year,[1509.62] year, you actually end up with a return that is slightly greater than 7% on that smooth basis, and that's, and that's why it shows up as a small increase. And the other thing, just to remind you, obviously, all the contributions, the teachers and your, the employers and the state have been making, that also has an impact. And particularly, I'd note that the state also made an additional contribution in that fiscal year, which also helped bump up your funded ratio. And that's, it was actually a pretty quiet year, but it's really kind of on track and maybe slightly ahead of what we expected for an increase for the year. Then, you know, that 74.4% that recognizes, represents, we're about, we have about three quarters the assets to fund the, the benefits that have been accrued to date. That shortfall is represented, what we, that shortfall between the assets and the actual obligation, we call the unfunded actual obligation. And last year, that was 89.7 billion, and that drops down to about 88.6 billion. Moving to the next slide, just to remind you that we, that 88.6 billion unfunded actual obligation, under the funding plan, we split into three pieces. The first is the piece, the state is responsible for funding, and you see that's about a little over 10 billion right now. Now, that's down from about 13 billion last year. The second piece is the, the piece that the employers are responsible for funding, and that was about just slightly over 77 billion last year, and that's up just north of 78 billion this year. So a small increase. And just to remind you, I know staff's talked about this, and we've talked about this, is we expect the, the state's share of the unfunded actual obligation is going to have much more changes year to year than the employer's share. And that's because the state, the state's portion of the, is the state's portion, portion of the unfunded actual obligation is much more sensitive to investment returns. So you're going to see like decrease, decreases like we've seen the last couple of years, and you may see increase in the future. But the employer's share will be much more stable, for better or worse. And just want to touch base on the last piece, which is the unallocated UAO. And the reason we say it's unallocated is that there's no, if, if, if there is an unfunded actual obligation for this piece, there's no direct funding to pay it off. So right now, it's negative 0.4 billion, which is actually a small surplus, that is, the assets allocated are greater than the actual obligation. So not currently an issue, but something I know staff's talked about, something that we believe should be addressed, and it would be optimal to do it before an allocated UAO appeared again. So that covers that. Moving to the next slide, focusing first on the red line there. That represents back when the funding plan was originally conceived, we did projections of how we were going to get from whatever it was, about 65% funded to that 100% funded, which was our target. Our date was 2046. So if you follow that red line, you see it slowly goes up, and it ultimately reaches 100% funded ratio in 2046. Obviously, that's based on a whole bunch of assumptions, and we know that's not going to exactly happen. But you can see that through the first about eight years, our, our actual results shown on, in black are pretty close to what the projections were. We actually deviated quite a bit last year, and that's because of that strong return, and put us about 5% relative to the funded ratio ahead. And we kind of remain ahead in this valuation, too. And once again, it, it heads to full funding in 2046. So moving to the next slide. So now, the question is on the contribution rates, now we're going to focus on that. So our contribution rate increase is needed. First of all, starting with the state, the current contribution rate is 8.328%. For those who are familiar with the board's evaluation policy, that's interprets what's in the teacher's retirement law, and effectively, that is the funding plan. And so we do calculations based on that, and the calculation for that comes up with the state contribution rate, then is less than the current 8.328%. So no increases needed. As you remember, last year, the board elected to maintain the rate at the current level as opposed to adjusting it downward. And both actual staff and Milliman agree that that would be appropriate choice this year to maintain at the current level. If the rate is maintained at the current level, we're projecting right now that the state's share of the unfunded actual obligation would be paid off in 2028. Looking at the employer's side, it's 19.1%. Different calculations specific to the employers, but the same general concept. We came up with contribution rate that was slightly below the 19.1%. Once again, we'd recommend maintaining that 19.1%. If the, that 19.1% is maintained, we pay off the, the employer's piece slightly before that 2046 at 2045. As I said, as on the prior slide, and on this, on this projection of when things are going to be paid off, it's based on a whole bunch of assumptions, the key one being the 7% return and the increase of, and the payroll. We know that's not going to exactly come to fruition. We're going to turn it over to David to kind of talk about some of the factors that will affect the funding going forward.
Thank you, Nick. And mostly what I want to talk about, as you know, that we have a recommendation, and I'll bring it on the screen at the end, to keep both the employer and the state contribution rate at existing level. What I wanted to remind everyone, we do a lot of monitoring of risks throughout the year. You know, I just want to give an update on three risks for everyone. Price inflation, as you know, it's been, it's been high. For us, because most of our benefits are tied to California inflation, is what we monitor, I just want to let everyone know, actually, fiscal year to date, I had a hard time to believe it when I saw it, but as of the end of February, the California CPI indicate that our fiscal year to date inflation is 1.8%. So that's in California. So if it remains at that rate, we may actually come in close or assume 2.75. And that, again, is for, based on the measures, I know I'm with you, Sharon, I had, I was, yes. And I think, and, yeah, and I think it has a lot to do with what's included in price inflation, that's probably the topic of another discussion, but I just wanted you to know where we stand. You know, investment return wise, right now, we are trending toward possibly ending below 7%. I'm sure Chris will provide more of an update tomorrow. Hopefully, we can turn things around, but that's another reason why we want to keep the rate as is, and there's still some risk there on the investment side. And you're all fully aware of the K-12 enrollment. There'll be a discussion at the Benefit and Services in January, so I won't go too much into the details, so that you can quickly see it. We've shown you this in November. There is a projected decline in K-12 enrollment over the next decade. So the reason why it's important for us, I just want you everyone also to remember, it's, we have a big year coming in front of us. You have some big decisions. So tomorrow, at the Investment Committee, you'll be considering a new asset allocation through, as part of the ALM process. Tied to that ALM process is the review of the actual assumptions. And that, we are on schedule to bring it to you next January. And the reason it's important is one of the key assumption, other than the investment return, is what we call the payroll growth assumption, which we're going to take a real close look at because of this anticipated decline in the K-12 enrollment. So just a heads up again that the review of actual assumption is coming next year. And believe it or not, it's going to be 10 years next year since the funding plan was adopted. And one of the provision in law, it asks that, as a board, you provide a report to the legislature every five years on the progress of the funding plan. So that next report is due in June of next year. And what we plan to do at some point over the next fiscal year is come back to you to obtain direction as to what kind of message we want to have in our report. So just want to remind everyone of what's coming over the next few months. And with this, this is what's in front of you for adoption today. So I just want to highlight again that what you adopt, even though a couple of slides ago, we showed the rate to the defined benefit program of 8.328 for the state, what you adopt is what's called the state supplemental contribution rate. There is a base rate of about 2%. So what we're asking is to keep it at 6.311. Same thing for the employer, what you adopt is the supplemental contribution rate, which is currently 10.85%. So we're asking to keep both at existing level. And every year, you also have to adopt the normal cost for the 2 at 62 members, and this is mostly to satisfy the requirement of PEPRA, the Public Employee Pension Reform Act of 2013. The 2 at 62 member contribution rate is tied to that normal cost. And what we adopted every year, and if it changes by more than 1%, it could trigger, it would trigger and increase a member rate, we are not there, but this is the normal cost based on this valuation. So this is what is in front of you for adoption.
We'll go to questions?
Yes.
Comments? Sharon?
Thanks, David, Rick. I have to say, Nick, it's, it's, it's great to meet you, Scott. It's a little like, I'm just, I've been spending years with Mark and Nick from Seattle, and so it's, I hope that Mark's enjoying, he's retired, yes, or?
Yes.
Yeah. You're getting the postcards from beautiful locations.
Yeah.
So just want to acknowledge, you know, Mark and his work for us for a long time. And so, again, welcome, Scott. And so, you know, and glad that you're around, Nick, for your institutional memory of us. But just kind of like, oh, yeah, Mark's, Mark's retired, which is great. I just had a couple questions, because I think whenever we get to this point, I'm always thoughtful of us being long-term investors, so no quick moves, you know, no, you know, we're, what is it, we're, we're a ship and not a speedboat, you know? It's one of the analogies that Chris uses about a marathon, not a sprint. So I like, I, I guess I just want to say, I support, you know, staff's recommendation. I like the idea of kind of, let's just stay where we're at for now, and just kind of, there's so much volatility in the markets. You know, when you talked about inflation, I, you know, there's just, there's just a lot of question marks out there. And so when, when in doubt, or when we have that volatility, I think my nature is to say, like, we have a plan, we have a long-term plan, let's stay the course. So I want to support staff's recommendation. Can you help, though, in terms of thinking about how do we, how do we kind of, maybe even for new board members, thinking about how do we take this kind of, the short-term thinking and some of the risks that you outlined about price, inflation, investment return, enrollment? Those enrollment numbers are a little startling as well. I mean, it's almost 10%. Help us with our thinking about how do we take kind of some of these short-term trends and then navigate kind of our long-term funding plan? What are some things we should be thinking about?
So on this, actually, a lot of it also, we are helping you with this. I think that's why, like, especially when we look at the, like, inflation, investment return outlook, and enrollment outlook, you know, this is why we have that experiment study, that our review of the assumptions we do every four years. So we're spending a lot of time this year looking at all of these things and what it might mean long-term to our funding of the system. So we're going to have more of a discussion on this in January, when we present the results of our experiment study. But again, it's all, you know, we are worried a little bit, like, what does it mean, this enrollment decline? Is it going to impact how many teachers we have?
Yeah.
Now, it's interesting, I don't know for how many of you are aware, but I think it was about two weeks ago, LA Unified School District reached an agreement with UTLE, and it was interesting, because they put into the agreement a decision to reduce class sizes by two students. So I view it as a, let's not lay off teachers because we have less students, let's in size, keep our number of teachers the same and have smaller class sizes. So this might be a silver lining for us, if that's a trend we start to see across California, which would be great.
We're negotiating that. LACC, I think a lot of locals are.
So it would be great. But it's just, yeah, so we'll be, we'll be looking at all of these things and keeping an eye on what's happening, and then we will report back, but.
That's helpful.
Yeah, I want to jump in and say, back in the mid-'90s, the legislature actually passed class size reduction, and that also kept the number of teachers more stable than when the students started to decline. So hopefully, you can get something like that again for the entire state, and that will help the enrollment of teachers stay more stable, even as students decline, the numbers of students decline. So that's something we're keeping an eye on, the political process, to try to help keep the number of teachers enrolled, you know, constant.
Yeah, I just appreciate you highlighting those as a risk for us to be aware of, and I'm, I'm just kind of writing notes, thinking, I'm glad we're having the experience study in January, that's just half a year away, that, that check-in report that we've committed to in the funding plan in June, which makes me think of Joycelyn and her team, and ensuring that between now and March or so, we need to kind of remind legislators, hey, we have this funding plan, remember that? So we might need to do some work in educating our legislature on that piece. And then finally, and then I'll be done, is some of the numbers you gave about kind of the employee rate at 2028, and then the employer, I think, was 2045 in terms of timeline. And I think in the back of my mind, I'm kind of like, I'm aware of succession planning, and as we think long-term now, 2045 and 46 doesn't seem that far away anymore. So I do think at some point, we need to think about ensuring that this plan's gonna, when we're all enjoying, you know, either retirement or the great beyond, that this plan is going to be in place, or some plan will be in place beyond these timeframes that we're talking about. So with that, I'll.
Thanks, Sharon.
Hand it back to you, Mr. Sharon.
Let me, let me recognize, Chris, I saw he came up to the, Chris?
Thank you for the opportunity, Harry. I'm Christopher Elman, the Chief Investment Officer for the fund. I'm going to break a 35-year sort of practice here and establish a new practice as of today. Historically, the investment branch and the CIO have not commented on the actuarial report, but I really want to change that as of today. And obviously, in the prior 35 years, the rates were set by the legislature, and you didn't have any control, but now you have control.
Yeah.
There are two ways, we want to fill this retirement bucket to 100%. They said today we're at 74 and 1/2. There are two spigots that are filling up that bucket.
That's true.
One is the investment return, which is 2/3 of the flow, but 1/3 is from you and these contribution rates. I don't control that side, you do. I want to be clear, and, and while I disagree with the recommendation, I, I support what they're doing. I don't want to throw a wrench in this, but I, I need to advocate all the time, and, which is an enemy of the school districts, and the employees, and the state, which is advocate for higher contribution rates. Because, remember, the, the less you can, you bring in in contributions puts more pressure on the investment return. They said you're 5% ahead. Hot dog, I'll pat myself on the back, but that's because of a 27% return. Think about that. 27% on $300 billion. Alan Emkin's here, he would be the first to say, that's ridiculous, don't count on that, that will never, should never occur in the future. That should be like a one in a 60-year event. You're counting on that. You're spending your winnings, and, and I can already tell you, that's a dangerous thing. So I'm going to come forward every time and be unpopular and advocate for higher contribution rates and keeping that surplus. When you get ahead in the race, as Sharon said, it's a marathon, you're ahead of your pace, sorry to mix my analogies and metaphors and all that, but you're ahead of your pace, don't slow down. You need to go to those higher, those option two, I think it is, or is it option one, rates, because I want more money. I want less pressure on me on the investment side to make another 27% return somewhere in the next future. So I think the investment branch really needs to come forward and, and state that all the time. It will always be the unpopular view, and I recognize that really needs to be negotiated ahead of time. But I want to emphasize the tail, or the headwinds that they cited. Maybe school enrollment works okay because of the class size, that's great. The demographics are powerful, you always have to pay attention, but I absolutely want to emphasize, you know that we've said the future is a conundrum. We don't know, there, there's no forecast that things are going to be great. It's, are they going to stay the same or get worse? And inflation is a serious problem to a retirement fund. So please don't spend the winnings and count on them all the time. Don't assume we're going to make 27%. While I'm not going to recommend it today, I just want you to understand, we're going to constantly push to encourage you to charge higher rates, which isn't popular, so that you don't have to count on big returns every couple of years to hit that fully funded status. And sorry to catch you guys offside, I didn't want you, Rick and, and David, but I apologize.
Thanks, Chris. Gail?
Thank you. You know, I, I think Mr. Elman sort of answered one of the questions, which is the compounding effect of, of investment returns, which is not a 27% assumption. I do think it's important that we're talking about our 7% discount rate, not a 27% return. That's a really important distinction, because we're not, but I do think it's a really important point, and I think you just made it, that there's, there's sort of two questions. One is, how does declining enrollment compound some of the, the pressure on the investment, on that spigot? And so I think if you could just comment on that, please, in terms of, of one risk, and really being clear on that. The second, I, I think is really important, is, and I think you addressed it, but just to be clear on the 2% at 62, and what it means, the, the pressure on our younger teachers, when we look at what these rates are, is not even. I just, if we could really emphasize that point, that this, that you've explained to me so many times, Mr. Lamro, but I do think it's important that everyone understands the pre and post-PEPRA pressures, and who, and like, how the, the increased rates that we're talking about potentially are very disproportionate in terms of, of where they fall. So I, I just think that's important. And I think as we go into the experiential study that you're looking at, that, that's an important piece to really start to bifurcate our membership because of the, that we're getting to the point where the PEPRA versus Pope, post-PEPRA pieces, say that three times fast. Are, I know, right? Are really, just, I think that, that understanding where that incidence falls is going to be really important in what you're pursuing in, in January. So is that just those three points, pressure from investments versus declining enrollment, where the increased rates would fall if we ever were to decide to raise them, and how that works? And then what we can do to sort of better educate both our teachers and the board in terms of, of that piece of it, assuming that we don't get some really big policy change? And even if we do, what, what that policy change would have to be?
Thank you. I'll try to keep it short. First, I just want to, just make one quick comment to address what Chris said. So I, I just have to say that you see from our recommendation, we also support, we understand we're ahead of schedule because of that return from two years ago. You know, the board policy says we could lower the rates. We're recommending, let's not lower the rates, let's keep the contribution rate flowing more than what the numbers say we need, because we know that, you know, we want to try to help protect against unforeseen events. So we are, we are in agreement with what Chris says as well. So to Ms. Miller, to answer some of your questions, so first, when it comes to enrollment declines, I've mentioned it in the past, because we collect contributions as a percentage of payroll, the total payroll really matters, you know? If we were a system, like, if you look across the River Calpers, a few years ago instituted an approach where, for some of their local agencies, they no longer collect contributions as a percentage of payroll. They calculate a dollar amount, and they send them a bill every year. Like, we're not set up to do this. But one positive of such approaches, you don't have to worry if the payroll declines because you're sending them a dollar amount. For us, the risk is this. If we are trying to, we also trying to collect a specific dollar amount. Think about it, like, we have the equivalent of, of a mortgage we're trying to pay by 2046. So there's a specific dollar amount we want to collect every year. We make an estimate of what the payroll will be next fiscal year, and we say, okay, that's about the equivalent of this contribution rate. If the payroll starts dropping, the only recourse you're going to have as a board will be to raise the rates, just to collect the same amount of money, not to collect more, but to raise the rate. And to answer your question, Ms. Miller, that's a risk for both the employers and the state contribution rate, because if payroll starts going down, we would need to potentially raise both contribution rates. Now, on the member side, you know, it's been 10 years now since PEPRA has been in place. A lot of our membership, all of our new teachers are 2 at 62 members. And what I wanted to highlight here is, you know, now we have contribution rates for those two member groups. The 2 at 60 pay 10.25%. The 2 at 62 pay 10.205%. But when the funding plan was passed, it was 9.205. So it was purposely set about a percent lower when the funding plan was passed, because these members have lower benefits. But the pension reform that was passed by Governor Brown and the legislature has a provision in it that will require these members to pay half of that normal cost you see on the screen. And that normal cost is heavily driven by actuarial assumptions. So when the board made the decision. So when the board made the decision back in 2017 to lower the investment return assumption from 7.5 to 7, that's when it triggered a 1% increase in that member contribution rate. So that's why next January, when we present the experience study, any changes, if we recommend changes to the assumptions, the one aspect we're gonna be looking at, potential impact to the state contribution rate, employer contribution rate, but also our 2 at 62 member contribution rate.
Thanks, David.
Did I answer all of your questions?
Anything else, Ms. Miller? Anything else? Thank you. Superintendent Thurman, followed by Jennifer Erdin, followed by Ms. Hendrick. Superintendent?
Thank you to the chair. Thank you for the presentation. I just want to acknowledge on the record, I appreciate the Chief Investment Officer saying, I want more money. It's a personal, it is a personal mantra for me as a, I'm talking as a public servant. We can talk about personal after that, but things have cost. And, you know, I'm certainly moved by your comments and weighing your comments against the impact on our local districts as employers and, you know, members. But I appreciate what you said, and things do have a cost, and often there needs to be greater investment to keep up with those costs. What I'd like to ask our presenters is about the impacts on school districts. You know, as you can imagine, we follow very closely the issues of declining enrollment. We work with districts to try and help them offset the declines, but that will take years to offset that trend that you've shown, that has been probably taking place for two decades now. As population has declined, certainly schools have experienced it in a big decline during the pandemic. We think about this all the time, and I note, Mr. Chair, that during the legislative report, there's a bill that will be discussed, SB 765, that would make it easier for retirees to return as subs. If the board wants to take a position on it, I certainly welcome that as a sponsor of the bill. But we know that there are pressures, and I looked at your data that you shared about the number of teachers, the dip in 2021. Glad to see that trending up in 2022, but I wanted to ask you, I cannot remember, does that correlate also with the number of people who we saw leave active teaching and retire? Is that, do your numbers in 2021 correlate with the number of teachers who retired at about that time? And really, what I want to know is, what's the impact on our local districts? So I'm assuming with the unfunded obligation, that the districts are probably absorbing that cost of any additional retirees that they hadn't expected, or an increase in their general fund, that they're trying to pick up that cost. And so do those numbers that you showed correlate with actual retirements? The dip in teachers, I don't want to assume that, right? Because maybe teachers moved someplace else, moved out of state, moved out of country, but does that number correlate with teachers who actually retired in 2021 or about that time?
Yes and no. We generally get 10, 11, 12,000 retirements a year. I think what we really saw during COVID is we saw actually a much larger than usual number of teachers just stopped working, not retiring, but just stopped working. And I think we had a report on it in November, and then what we saw in 2122 was a much greater unusual number of teachers returning to work. So it seems maybe a lot of teachers had stopped working during COVID and came back post-COVID. So that was really the biggest driver of why we saw a drop and saw an increase again. The number of retirements played a little role, but we really saw 40,000 jump, a decline in one year and jump back the following year. It was mostly driven by, not teachers retiring, but those just simply stopping working.
And how much did you say that decline was? You said we saw a decline and then you saw an increase in 40,000?
Yeah, so we went from about 450,000 to about 410 and back to 450,000, all over the course of two years.
So most of those were stopped working, not retired?
Correct. It was mostly driven by those who would just simply stop working.
So the districts didn't necessarily have to start covering more retirement costs for that period?
Correct.
Thank you.
So let me just add to what he said. So a portion of our members are community college. And then in these type of recessions, community college enrollment just sometimes just really decreases. And so you see a lot of that. Community college students don't go to community college, and the part, many of the community college teachers are part-time, a large number. And so they don't get the teaching assignments, and so they don't show up on our roles to have, having taught that year, and so they're inactive. And so that's part of that. And then you had the part-time teachers, the people in, especially in the smaller rural areas where, you know, somebody would teach, but they'd only teach a small portion of that year, the substitute teachers and those type. That didn't happen either during the recession. So that's part of the numbers that declined that we saw. And then that reversed itself the next year, so that the part-time teachers are now teaching part-time, and community colleges haven't rebounded completely, but there's a small rebound in community college enrollment and community college teachers. So some of that are your part-time faculty and your community college teachers that are reflected in that. And then they wouldn't hire as many new administrators too, and they're part of our, they're part of our plan. So it's, it's a little varied, but yeah. So the retirements didn't really spike like I think we thought they might. So that's part of that also.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I could, I just wanted to ask, as the presenters mentioned, PEPRA. And I'll say, as someone who has served at the school board level, served in the legislature, and now asking for us to create some ability for retired teachers to be able to come back into the classroom without a penalty, I am sensitive to what we need to protect for our members. And I pay attention to PEPRA, and I know it is not an easy conversation, but I think we can navigate it. I am curious if any of the presenters or our staff want to comment on any trends that you've seen outside of California? As I know that some states are making an active effort to offset a decline in available teaching staff using retirees. And are there, are there any unintended consequences to that action? Anything that you've seen or that our staff would care to comment on, that we should be aware about that? Because I think, I think the other states are asking more than just short-term retirees to come back as subs. They're actually using, they've created reform that allows retirees to come back for longer periods of time. And I'm just wondering, anything that you've observed that we should be aware of?
I've seen a lot of, a number of states start that discussion, and bills have been introduced. I know Alaska has had severe shortages of teachers since they actually went to define contribution plan, so now there's some momentum to reverse that. I've seen some other states also kind of do that. So I haven't seen a lot of actual bills pass, but there is a lot of discussion and there is a lot of recognition that there are, you know, teacher shortages around the country. And so we're just keeping an eye on what's going on in other states.
Any unintended consequences from the standpoint of maintaining and managing a retirement fund that you have seen? I know New Jersey has been aggressive in its reform and several other states. Any unintended consequences that we should be mindful of?
There's always consequences when you, some of them have sharply reduced the pensions, the pension plans in the past, and that's part of the reason why there are shortages. So I'm gonna ask Nick and Scott.
Yeah, Rick, I'll share one example from Oregon, who I also work with, where traditionally, they have not allowed retirees in the public employee system there to work more than a set number of hours if they come back until they have to suspend their retirement, which obviously is a disincentive. And they recently, there have been certain exceptions carved out for certain parts of the system for where there are significant needs for hiring. The system covers teachers up there and it covers general employees. And they passed essentially a five-year window that expanded those exceptions to say, across the board, we're relaxing this criteria, and then we're gonna come back and revisit it. So they're in year three or four of that right now. And so we don't know whether it'll become long-term or not, but it has certainly helped for individual districts and employers to be able to have another pool to draw from. The board, when they were faced with what, you know, what might this mean for our contributions and our payroll and everything, they decided not to make any guesses about how much payroll would come back that they were gonna collect contributions on. They made sure that they were still collecting contributions on that payroll, so it wasn't like a donut hole of replacing payroll that they otherwise would have been contributing on. So that was the way they guarded against it. And then they're kind of not, not banking on that amount because it is time limited. So right now, that's kind of coming in as extra contributions relative to what they would have had status quo, at least until something longer term changes there.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just add, I think some of your questions and the policy decisions that you're exploring, I think merit some time from this board in their appropriate setting, where we literally just whiteboard and get curious about the retirement, the future of public education, the number of members, the number of students, how the world has changed and shifted post-pandemic, what are the implications for a pension fund that's been around for 100 years? How do we think about the possibilities of range of outcomes? I think it would be irresponsible for us not to start to get really curious about the existential threats to a system that's been around for over 100 years that will continue to be here, but just like how people are working has changed dramatically, how people look at office buildings is changing, how people think about so many different variables of their lives, 2019 versus 2023. So my commitment to you and I think to the team is to think about where we start having these conversations and when, how do we prioritize them, just with a curious, open mind. So I thank you for your questions and some of the policy issues that you're starting to raise, because they're real.
Mr. Chair, if that was a motion, I second all the agenda, but you said we would discuss it. I'm very curious, I'm very curious. And I'm curious would that happen in the context of a special meeting or in one of our regular scheduled meetings? Or how do we operationalize everything that you said? Because I think California can really lead in this area. We, you know, we've gone out and done private fundraising to try to get more members into the system by doing public service announcements, extolling the benefits of becoming a teacher. We should have just called the communications department here. We should have, we could have created a great video based on what I saw here today. But how do we operationalize that? Is that a special meeting or in the context of one of our existing meetings?
It could be, and I see our governance advisor, Amy Macduffie, is here in the audience and working with her, and maybe with the governance committee, we can prioritize that and think about, and working with our executive team. Maybe it's a special meeting, who presents. We do so much on the investment side in terms of co-investments, what we're trying to do, the collaborative model, all good stuff to try to make a difference around the edges on the investment side. But I think on the other side of the ledger is the realization that this, there's, as Chris said, there's returns, there's contributions. And so I think we'll work with Cassandra and with Amy and think about where we set aside some time, what that agenda would look like, and we'd welcome your input in terms of crafting that agenda and making that happen.
Chair just said if you bring something up, you've got to do some work. Yeah, I'm happy to. I'm happy to. I think it's timely, I think it's timely, right? Because we are seeing a decline in students, we're seeing a reduction in active teachers, and that means fewer folks into our system. And so we'd be happy to work with you and our staff and think through something in a timely way that we can engage in these conversations. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. So we have Jennifer, Sharon, and then Lynn.
That's tough to follow, Mr. Chair. And the superintendent actually characterized far better than I would what I was going to say on the inputs. And then in terms of bringing that to the numbers, really appreciate the really rigorous and thoughtful work, you know, Rick and David, Nick and Scott, and also Chris, breaking 35 years of history to come to the, to the mic on this, because it is critical that all of this is incorporated, and we've been, we've had the luxury of being able to have a high confidence value around looking at long-term norms for which we have a lot of things changing. And so all I was gonna ask is, as we move forward, we'll have that, if we can make sure as we come to the fall report and going forward, that we're stress testing in a way that we understand if that range of outcomes is widening, if so, what we do about it, where you continue to have clear confidence values, where less so, and then where we may be giving back some of these excess returns, even if we're outperforming our benchmarks. The market will only give so much of the risk that we take, that we're integrating that with the ideas and planning, so we're prepared for the future as we have been. So thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Sharon?
I would just move staff approval. I think I moved it earlier, but I just thought I'd get us back to. And I would second the superintendent's idea. I just think the portability issue, if I could just chime in, the portability issue, we don't have teachers like necessarily staying in California for 30 years and being an educator the whole time. There's a lot more dynamism not at this point, so.
So you're moving the staff recommendation?
For 4A.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. Before we take a vote on that, I want to recognize Lynn, because she has some questions or some comments. Lynn?
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you so much for the report. Appreciate all of the work. And again, the way that you explain it is always so easy to follow. It's a very complex topic. Just two quick questions. On the enrollment chart that you showed earlier, I know that it was a 10-year projection, so it's already going out quite a bit, but do you have any sense of what happens after the 10th year? Does the decline start to stabilize, or does it continue to decline?
I don't. This is as far, and again, we rely on Department of Finance, this is data that they issued. I think they're basing it on known demographics and expected trends, but they never go further than 10 years. So we could try to find out and reach out to see if they have any ideas. So that's something we can certainly do. We generally report back on this in our November report, so we'll put a note to try to maybe get in touch with them and to see if we can find more information.
That would be great. I appreciate that. And then just another one quick question on the PEPRA contribution rate. Is there a cap on how high the PEPRA contribution rate can go?
No.
Okay.
It's simply tied to that number you're being asked to approve the normal cost. And I would say if you look across the river at Calpers, it is now a fairly common occurrence for PEPRA members to pay more than the members who have a higher benefit package higher before PEPRA. It's happened a lot, especially for what call the police officers and firefighters in California. Very often, the new hire pay much more than the, than the workers who started before PEPRA. So hopefully, we don't get to that point here, but that is a risk that could, where it could certainly occur on our side as well.
Yes, and I'm aware of that, and that has started to filter up a little bit.
Yeah.
So let me jump in and talk about today's workforce versus 30 years ago, 40 years ago, where those contribution rates were set. And so retirement systems, including Calpers, Calsters, we're using much higher investment returns, 8 and 1/4, 8 and 1/2, 8. So when you're making, when you're projecting those type of returns, which are, which always surprised, surprised me, because they were extraordinary projections, but when you're projecting those type of returns, you're not gonna need member contributions to be as high. And so today's workforce, going forward, we're projecting seven, and in some cases, even, even lower than that. So you are gonna need higher contribution rates than the prior workforce where you were counting on making 8%, 8 and 1/4, 8 and 1/2. So it's, looking at it like that, it's not that surprising that today's members are paying more than 30 and 40 years ago, when those rates were actually set for that type of membership, so.
That makes sense, Rick. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the floor, and it's been properly seconded to approve the staff recommendation of 4A. Jennifer, is this a roll call? Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the staff recommendation for 4A, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Go to 4B. David?
Jonathan, if you could bring up the slides we have, we have one deck of slides of 4B and C. Perfect. Always on top of things. Thank you. I'll pass it over to Nick for, and again, Mr. Chair, we're gonna take them one at a time, so we'll do 4B first, you can adopt, and then we'll do 4C after. Let's go.
And I'll pass it over to Scott.
Sounds good. Okay, so there are two valuations here that we'll take and kind of discuss together, a lot of similarities. We're gonna start with the defined benefit supplement program. So on this chart, you can see two sets of bar graphs, the pair to the The pair to the left is the valuation we're talking about, the June 30, 2022, and then prior year for comparison. So, the blue bar there is the value of assets, which for this purpose, unlike the DB program we were just talking about, we use a market value, so a non-smooth asset value, so it reflects changes more, more quickly. And then, the red is the actuarial obligation or liability. So, the highlights here are that the funded status at this most recent valuation date in 2022 was just under 130%, so the 129.9%. And the surplus, the value of the assets above the obligation, was 3.95 billion for the DB Supplement Program. Both of those are down compared to the prior year due to a negative about 2.5% return on the underlying assets, so that filters through to the funded status. Still, you know, over 100%, still in a good spot, but less so than the prior year. At this funded status level, this is above the threshold at which the Board policy allows for additional earnings credits, so that's shown on the next slide. This shows a kind of historical picture of it, and then at the far right, the recommended additional earnings credit that can be adopted under the Board policy of 5.47%. That would get applied to balances as of June 30, 2022 for the relevant members, and goes kind of on top of the minimum interest credit of about 1.5% that already existed, so brings it up to about the 7%, or brings up to the 7% target here. See, the note at the bottom of this page shows how those funded status results from the prior slide change after adopting this recommended AEC amount, and it would drop to about 124% on the funded ratio, and that surplus would be reduced to 3.34 billion. So, I'll pause there for any questions on the DB Supplement Program.
And the recommendation in front of you is, again, based on the Board policy, so for the Defined Benefit Plan, you have a Board policy that has thresholds, and as long as we exceed those thresholds, we recommend additional earnings credit. The calculation from the policy resulted in a 5.47% recommendation. So, that is the motion in front of you.
Thank you, Scott, thank you, David. Sharon?
I support staff recommendation. We have a lot of members in our world of community colleges that have this DBS account, and my only question that people can follow up afterwards, because it's not actual, our question is, how do we communicate this to our members? Because last year, I remember getting calls like, Sharon, there's something in my retirement report or my paid, you know, I think it's in your retirement report, right, where it shows up, the annual report, the credit. So, people just always ask questions when they see something unique in there. So, I would love to hear from staff offline, because I think people get it on their statement, and they're like, what is this? And it's kind of hard to explain unless you're in this board meeting and hearing all this, so I guess that would be the only piece, but I would move staff recommendation.
And Sharon, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the staff recommendation for 4B. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Recommendation passes for 4B unanimously, 4C.
Thank you. Scott, go ahead.
Sure. So, the second piece here, the Cash Balance Benefit Program, same format of the slide, again, looking at sort of the change from prior year valuation to the June 30, 2022 valuation. And a couple of things to call out here. First of all, we're talking about a different order of magnitude, now it's millions instead of billions on this slide, but the funded status dropped more year to year, so from about 131% the prior year to 115.5%. And the bigger decrease here is because there was a more negative rate of return on the assets underlying this portfolio, so the return was around negative 10% for this portfolio, which has to do with the underlying asset allocation, I think David wanted to.
Yeah, I just want to jump in here. So, years ago, when this program was created, a decision was made, it was the appropriate decision to make at the time to not invest in, I would say, illiquid asset classes. It was not invested in private equity and real estate. So, that has, because those two classes had great return last year, it led to actually a negative 10% return for that fund last year, which you can see why the funded status dropped so much. But tomorrow, as part of the ALM item on the Investment Committee, the, you will be, the Investment Committee will be asked to adopt a new asset allocation for the fund as a part of that decision is to move the cash balance to be invested the same way as all the other programs. So, going forward, starting next fiscal year, we are looking to have the cash balance invested the same ways the Defined Benefit Program. So, these differences will go away starting next fiscal year. Now, this year, the cash balance is trending actually higher than all the other programs return-wise, because that's generally how it works, especially, I think this year, we might be recognizing some markdown on real estate and so forth, so don't be surprised if next year you see a higher return for cash balance. But I just want to point it out that tomorrow, the Board, the Investment Committee will be asked to, when they adopt the asset allocation, it will now apply to the cash balance.
Thank you, David.
Back to Scott.
Okay. So, that 115.5% funded status is above the Board's policy threshold for giving additional earnings credits, and so that's what's been calculated here, a little bit smaller additional earning credit than in the prior program because of the funded status, but the calculation comes out with 4.19% as that amount, and then, as noted at the bottom of the slide, that means the revised funded ratio after reflecting that would drop to 111%, which is that threshold under the Board policy. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Sharon?
Thank you, David, for clarifying that issue around the asset allocation. So, the DBS account is also, does the DBS asset allocation mimic our DB?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So, DB and DBS, same asset allocation, CB has had the non-illiquid, that's a double negative, but, and, and so, tomorrow, we'll be able to kind of, so basically, moving forward after tomorrow, if the Board does vote to do that, then all of our, the DB, DBS, CB, will all have the same asset allocation moving forward, correct?
Yes.
And then, just to reiterate, what we're doing is we're basically just following our policy right now, right? And you do the calculations to say how far we were above or below the policy, and we're kind of writing that with these credits back to our members. Great. So, I would move, move a staff approval with the same caveat of, you know, again, these are a lot of like part-time community college faculty that are in cash balance, so some kind of, I know we do little, you know, you know, explanations on people's annual statements, it would just be helpful to have something to clearly and easily explain in a sentence what this is, so, great. So, I'd move staff approval.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the staff recommendation for 4C. Further questions? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? 4C passes. Thank you. Scott, Nick, David, Rick, thank you for your work, presentations, appreciate it. We're moving to, yeah, number five, which is the lump sum death benefit, my least favorite item all year long. How much are they going to, when we go?
I love the lump sum death benefit.
Yes, and this is, so this is.
Do we have to do this every year?
Yes, the law says you have to review the lump sum debt benefit once a year, and this is actually very rare for a Board to have control over benefit amounts. So, this is a privilege that was given to you, if you put it this way, but you have the ability to set the lump sum debt benefit paid to the families of our members when they pass away. I just wanted to remind for those of you who are on the Benefit and Services Committee, we had a discussion back in January around the lump sum debt benefit. The direction we received from the committee was to come back next fiscal year to this Board with a policy including two things. The first one, to always base increases in the lump sum debt benefit based on the inflation seen in California in the previous calendar year. So, there, so what is in front of you for consideration today is a 5.6% increase in the debt benefit, which is inflation seen in California in calendar year 2022. The other thing that was asked by the Benefit and Services Committee was to include in the policy something similar that we just did for cash balance and Defined Benefit Supplement, to have thresholds, funding thresholds that we would compare against, that if we meet those thresholds, we would recommend an increase. Now, we have yet to work on those, this is what we're going to do next year, we'll make sure to include our stakeholders in the process. So, this year, again, we're just, we are putting in front of you whether or not you want to increase the benefit, our recommendation, as we've done the last few years since we don't have any thresholds in place, taking into account the size of our unfunded liability, is to keep it as is, you can certainly increase it. If you do increase it, as we mentioned on page, give me a second, I believe it's on page four of your item, correct? It's a, it would, a 5.6% increase would raise the lump sum debt benefit for our retired members and the Coverage A members to 7,287. It's about a $383, $384 increase, and it would increase the active Coverage B amount to $29,148, an increase of about $1,500, uh, 1,500. The key thing here is, if you do adopt it, it would increase the unfunded actual obligation you saw for item 4A by about $60 million. Again, as Nick and Scott pointed in their item, in the overall scheme of things for the Defined Benefit Program, this is not a significant amount when we're talking about a $90 billion unfunded actual obligation. Adding 60 million is not significant, but it is still $60 million. And as per the rules of the funding plan, this is something that will be paid solely by the state, not the members, not the employers. So, with this, I'm done with my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions, and again, the.
Questions? Mr. Prasan, Bill?
I'm not clear. What's your recommendation?
Ours, right now, our recommendation is just to keep the benefit as is, but what is up for consideration is whether or not as a Board you want to increase it by 5.6%.
Well, I'll move the recommendation of staff.
Give a second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the staff recommendation. Discussions, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Before we do, I noticed that, are there members of the public that want to speak to us on this item?
We have no members of the public in queue right now.
Thank you. So, the recommendation is to approve, the motion on the floor is to approve the staff recommendation, it's been seconded. Are any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? That passes. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for your presentations. This is our, this is an information item, state and federal legislation. Joyce, Lynn? This is our last item before lunch, and again, this is just information.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Joyce Lynn Martinez Way, Director of Governmental Relations. I have a brief update for you on a variety of bills. The matrix was included in Item 6 as Attachment 2, and so, there's several bills listed there, bills that you have positions on, there are a few that you don't, and I wanted to let you know upfront that we haven't brought those to you today for position because there's still much influx around those bills, and so, I want to make sure we know what's going on with them before you would take any action on them. So, I do want to say that everything is revolving around a Senate Appropriations Committee right now. You'll notice, and this is unique, apparently, all the bills related to CalSTRS started on the Senate side this year, so that's sort of the focus of hearings right now, besides the fact that the May revise will be coming out soon, and there'll be budget subcommittee hearings and full committee hearings before too long. But Senate Appropriations is underway, their deadline to move bills with fiscal impact out of their committee is on May 19th. I will start with bills that have already been placed on the suspense file. There's SB 252, the fossil fuel divestment bill, and SB 660, which is on Page 2 of Attachment 2, and that's a bill that establishes the California Public Retirement System Agency Cost and Liability Panel in the State Controller's Office, and that's to analyze the costs of reciprocity and concurrent retirements. So, those are both already on the suspense file. Coming up on Monday, our two sponsored bills, one regarding service retirement benefit backdating, SB 327, and then federal background checks for employees, and those with tentative offers on the table, that's SB 885, so those will be heard Monday, along with SB 261, the climate-related financial risk reporting bill. Then, we have some bills that have received amendments and will likely come up probably on May 15th, but they haven't been set for a hearing yet, so we have SB 432, that's the cleanup bill for AB 1667 from last year regarding overpayments, and then SB 765, which we heard a little bit about earlier, which is a teacher pipeline bill with those post-retirement provisions in it. And so, we're looking forward to seeing those come up soon. There is one bill on here, SB 637, which has to do with financial institutions doing business with firearms manufacturers. That's a two-year bill, so we're going to keep an eye on that and see if that changes at all in 2024. I'll mention SGR 1 regarding the GPO and WEP repeal, that's moving right along, so it's already on the Assembly Floor, it's made it to the Second House and is finding success. And HR 82 hasn't moved forward in Congress, that's the bill that would actually repeal those provisions. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Any questions or comments on the update, legislative update? Sharon?
So, I mean, could this be the year this happens, or, I mean, what, there's so much happening, obviously, in DC right now, so, I mean, if you had to like, you know, do your, your, I don't know, sports betting or something on the social security piece, what's your sense? I mean.
I mean, there, I think our, there is a good clip at which they've gotten cosponsors at this point in time, and they might be even ahead of their timing from last year. I still think cost is a tremendous pressure on that bill that it may not see its way forward, but I think there's still, at least in cosponsorship, a lot of support.
Yeah. Thanks.
Denise?
Joyce Lynn, is there a reason that it's not recommended to support SB 765?
It's a good question, Denise. I think there, as you were hearing earlier in the talk about the actuarial implications, I think there are policy-wise potential concerns, and then, a lot of discussion still ongoing about how to put, the word that's being used is guardrails around the use of the exemptions. There's the idea that was mentioned earlier about employer contributions for that work, because generally, right now, there are no contributions for members who work post-retirement. There's a possibility that behavior could be changed where members decide to retire earlier because they know they can make up the difference with retired member activities, and that could have implications over time to the fund. There's also the implications of reputational risk around double dipping. We had put in place the 180-day separation from service requirement quite some time ago, it was in 2009, we ran the bill, and that was to deal with federal tax qualification rules, where you have to have a bona fide separation of service before you receive your retirement benefits. You have to definitely be retired, can't be an arrangement where you'll come back to work. Ours is longer because summer breaks could be seen as just a natural break, and then you come right back. So, those are put in place for those under normal retirement age. PEPRA, which we've talked a lot about this morning, we've definitely got scooped up into PEPRA where that requirement was extended to all members regardless of age because of those implications, and so, I think there's just a lot of different pieces around it that are still being considered.
So, we're waiting for clearer language.
To see where, yeah, the conversations go.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Joyce Lynn. Of course.
Thanks, Denise, for asking that question, and Joyce Lynn, I'd ask that you appropriately just keep me updated as, around this bill specifically. I think you used the term guardrails, et cetera, so please keep me updated. As, in this role, certainly, there's lots of complexities, and this is the only hat we're wearing in this room. On the other hand, I'm regularly on a email list at Santa Monica High School, and I see on a regular basis the reality that literally, they can't fill classrooms with because of the shortage in substitutes, and this is at Santa Monica High School, so as the Superintendent has stated, this is a statewide, national challenge that we need to find a solution to without having unintended consequences on the pension fund. So, I'm interested as the Chair of the Board, but I'm also interested from a policy perspective, so please keep me updated as this bill goes through the process.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing Mr. Raffino and then Karen Yamamoto. Frank? Frank?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a clarification to follow up in your comment to keep, to keep you informed. Would that be appropriate to ask staff to give us an analysis on this bill from CalSTRS' perspective?
Sure. Joyce Lynn, I'm sure she can do, I'm sure she can, she has it, and she can communicate that to us.
I mean, we do have an analysis, I'm sure if we, with the speaker, I mean, with the, with Senator Portentino, and I'm sure with the sponsor. But from CalSTRS' perspective, I think it would be helpful to understand and maybe engage the stakeholders on this because this is a complex issue that affects many people and do a dive in, I think it would be worthwhile.
Sure.
Thank you.
Definitely. If I had to guess, my staff person who's working on the bill, Peter is already starting the analysis at your request.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Raffino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Karen?
Thanks, Joyce Lynn. Just so, along those same lines, I'm just, I might have missed the conversation or what you said about the board, the board position. Are we going to take any, are you going to put any of these bills before us for a position?
At this point, I don't have plans to do that. Part of it is the timing of the board, so it isn't working so smoothly with the legislative calendar with your offsite in July. Generally, we wouldn't bring these types of items before you there. And then the September board meeting is the last two days of session. So it is possible we can come to the Chair and Vice Chair with bills of, because of the timing that we need to take positions on. But at this point, that's not totally planned out.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you for your report. And there is already some committee analysis provided by the Senate. If you want to read something before the additional analysis comes forward, there's also analysis, well, analysis by the California Retired Teachers Association. They have taken a position. Many of the organizations have said that they would like to continue talking about amendments. They want the guardrails that you've talked about. But I would ask, I'd make a request that if we're going to do a special session or conversation, that we do it in a way that CalSTRS could be engaged before the bill is completely dispensed with in the legislature. And even if this board says, hey, we're taking no position or a position of no, I think that this board and this organization probably has the most important perspective on this matter. And in that way, I'm making the request, if there's going to be board discussion on the whole topic, could it happen in a way that it happens before the bill is dispensed in the legislature? That would mean that there'd have to be a discussion in May or June in some way, or at the retreat, but it has to time with whenever the bill might be dispensed with in the legislature.
So I'd like to say yes, right? But I want to think about the logistics of it.
Of course.
And so the timing of this, you're speaking specifically about the bill relative to retirees coming back and being, okay. So that specific conversation, the timing of the dispensment of this bill would be when? When would that, when would that occur?
So the final two weeks of session are the first two weeks of September, but they're generally, you know, people aim to have things done before that. So the committee, policy committee hearings start in the Second House, the beginning of June. And then the fiscal committees will be back, I think, after summer recess to act on the last few bills.
Let me, let me just, if we were able to do this, the way in which I would suggest it be done, it would be virtually so that people can, Brian, what is the necessary timing of convening the board on a specific piece of this specific legislation if we wanted to have a discussion and an agenda item solely on this legislation, and we wanted to do it virtually? What's the timing relative to making, posting this publicly?
It would be the same as your usual timing, 10 days in advance.
10 days in advance. So, Mr. Superintendent, if it's okay, would, rather than trying to resolve this right here, right now at the DIAS, would you, would it be okay for the Chair and the Vice Chair to work with the leadership to see how the logistics would work? We certainly understand your intent. Of course. Thank you very much.
I think it's better that way because if it were up to me, I'd say, let's meet next week. But I think it's better that the Chair and the Vice Chair work through the logistics and come up with something that would be appropriate and meet the needs of the members of the board.
Sure. And certainly, understanding convening 11 or 12 board members is not easy either, so convening of the majority of the board would be appropriate. And, you know, I'm sure people have travel plans, et cetera.
Of course. And again, it's not about what the board might opine about the bill. It's about all the topics that you talked about. How do we balance retirements? How do we balance reduction of teachers? How do we balance? I think that conversation's more important than the position that the board takes.
Okay, so that, that more complex, comprehensive discussion, I think, is '23, '24 fiscal years after July 1st, which is a separate in-person, I think, meeting where we would engage with stakeholders and have people come forth. So that's how I'm thinking about the more comprehensive issue, that that would be in-person, '23, '24. We agendize some time for that discussion. But specific to the bill, that would be, if we do a convening of the board, it would be virtually before the dispensment of that bill. A more holistic one would be into the '23, '24 year, which would be going to take a lot of time, a lot of planning and coordination with our staff, stakeholders, policy leaders, et cetera.
I submit to the direction of the Chair. I think that the conversations are probably going to run together.
Yep.
And that they're probably stages of conversations. There are people having the conversation because of the bill and because of the principals who are calling me every week and saying, I've got a retired teacher who wants to teach and cannot teach simply because of what's in statute now. So, but I submit to whatever the Chair and the board come up with in terms of the timeline.
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. Okay. Seeing.
No, 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 I'm.
We do have members of the public who would like to speak on this item, so we'll take comments from the public, and then we will adjourn, a break for lunch.
Good morning. Jennifer Baker with the California Retired Teachers Association. I wasn't going to comment, but because you did engage in a little bit regarding discussion about SB 765, I did want to note that CalRTA was one of the organizations that did testify. We don't have an official position on the bill yet, as we are still chewing on the language, but we do have some concerns, and I appreciate the way that Joyce Lynn framed the guardrails as, I think, one of the last vestiges of individuals that were around when PEPRA was created. This issue was one of the justifications for including CalSTRS in PEPRA. And so there are some very sensitive political discussions regarding this. And there are some who have wanted to use this type of issue as a way to try to justify the elimination of CalSTRS. So there are some sensitive political discussions. Is there a need to try to create some flexibility? I think that that conversation absolutely exists, but it is important to ensure that we're having a conversation about doing no fiscal harm to CalSTRS while creating those guardrails to ensure at the same time that there's no unintended consequences. We certainly appreciate the conversations we've been able to have with the superintendent's office and look forward to further conversation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baker. Anyone else from the public who would like to address the board on this matter or the legislation items before us? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to break for lunch, and we'll be back at 1 o'clock. The Benchmark Review Project. This is a continued education and a reminder that this is solely an information item today. And this is ongoing conversation that we've been having with Makita and others around the whole issue of benchmarks. I'll turn it over to Steve McCourt, Crystal, and Alan. Steve, who's going to lead it off? Crystal?
I'll kick it off.
Great.
And then turn it over to Alan, Crystal Turco, CalSTRS staff. As Harry indicated, this is a continuation of conversation that started in January with the board wanting a more simplified approach to total fund benchmarks. Before I turn this over to Alan and Stephen, because they will go over the bulk of the presentation, I did want to remind the board, although incentive compensation and benchmarks are married, the purpose of this conversation is not focused on incentive compensation or compensation, just as a reminder. And if any further action is needed at a later time, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when it comes. So with that, Alan.
Yes, Bill? If you don't mind, I just have, I want to make sure I start at the right place because this, this conversation has, I think, become a bit complicated. It is a complicated topic in many respects, but, so I went back to our policy statement, and I went to the section on portfolio measurements and benchmarks, which I thought might be helpful. And I'd like to read, there are two different kinds of items that are identified there. One is the Policy Benchmark Index, and the other is the Reference Portfolio. And if I might read that portion that refers to the Reference Portfolio to see if that's what we're talking about today. And it reads, "The Reference Portfolio is the Morningstar Moderate Target Risk Index, which is designed to help measure target date mutual funds with a long investment horizon and risk level similar to that of the CalSTRS investment portfolio. The measure is designed to allow members and the public to compare the portfolio investment performance to a similar risk level portfolio they could utilize within their personal retirement accounts. This measure will be used in external publications to provide comparison that is publicly available and clearly defined. The Reference Portfolio is also the most appropriate performance measurement tool to measure the performance success of the portfolio over the long, over long time periods." In contradistinction, the Policy Benchmark Index is different because it talks about developing respective asset classes' custom benchmarks in that. And so there's no relationship that I read in this, but I want to make sure I understand that, that the Reference Portfolio is merely something that is reference, and it doesn't define any other underlying or set limits on any underlying asset allocation benchmark.
That is our understanding.
And that is from the policy statement of the board. Okay? So let's.
Thanks. Thanks for level setting. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, I'll get it started. I'm losing my voice, which could be a blessing or a curse, depending upon your point of view. And we're going to go through this pretty quickly. But the board asked a group of us to look at total portfolio benchmarks slash Reference Portfolio. And if rest of the presentation, I'm going to use Reference Portfolio. I'm not going to confuse any more than necessary the difference between the Policy Benchmark and the Reference Portfolio. The process included a survey, one-on-one interviews with board members, meetings with HR staff, investment staff, legal counsel, consultants, and board members. And it was to address the big, big picture, literally, almost verbatim, the language in the existing policy defining the Reference Portfolio. This pyramid gives you a semblance of the level of complexity that exists in the existing portfolio. You, as policy members, as policymakers, where you are in that benchmark, in that pyramid, is up to you. And you could get way into the weeds, or you could be at a very, very high level. But if we're talking about a Reference Portfolio, whose objective is to provide communications and clarity and transparency, then the higher up in that period pyramid you are, the more effective that Reference Portfolio will be. And there's a wide range of choices. But effectively, you could adopt a Reference Portfolio that just has a few components that are publicly available, which Steve will get into shortly, that will provide a reference for anyone who cares, that's easy to understand, that's easily communicated, and it makes sense. So Crystal talked about the beginning of this process in January. Well, to your credit and your staff's credit, you started looking at benchmarks issues almost five years ago. So this is nothing new. And in fact, it really ramped up a little bit less than three years ago when you asked us to come back. And a whole series of meetings, educational research occurred to get to the point today where we can provide you with some alternatives to look at as possible Reference Portfolios. But if anyone ever asks you, if you did your homework on Reference Portfolios, the answer is unequivocally yes. You beat this dog to death. And that's a technical term. But it's, at a certain point, you have to make a decision. Now's not that point, but at a certain point, you have to make a decision. Very, very simple diagram, graphic, and you could go from your existing relatively complex, although it's not really complex when you remember that pyramid where you have hundreds of benchmarks, to one that's very simple, it has only two. Your direction to us was come back, simple is better. And we believe that for the purpose of a Reference Portfolio, simple is better across the board. And now I'll turn it over to Steve, and I'll do the close.
Great. Thank you, Alan. Steve McCourt, Makita Investment Group. So following on from Alan's comments about the approach to Reference Portfolios and highlighting the feedback from the board in January to focus on options that were more simple Reference Portfolios as opposed to more complex ones, we highlighted four broad indexes that are components of the potential Reference Portfolios that I'll highlight in the following slide. Importantly, all of these are very broad. All of these are very industry-accepted within the investment industry, and none of these are customized. The MSCI ACQ IMI Global Equity Index is the most commonly utilized broad index of publicly listed companies around the world. The Bloomberg Aggregate Index is the most commonly utilized index of investment-grade bonds within the US. The Private Equity Index is the State Street Private Equity Index, which is one of a handful of benchmarks, peer benchmarks, that is regularly used within the private equity industry. And the NACRIF Odyssey Index is the most commonly used broad benchmark for commercial real estate. So none of these are customized for your strategy, your approach. They all represent broad, a broad, generally accepted universe of assets within each of these asset categories. So for the purposes of this meeting, we modeled three potential Reference Portfolios, the most simple being 70% MSCI ACQ, which is global equities, and 30% Bloomberg Aggregate, which is investment-grade US fixed income. Options two and three represent two variations of a slightly more complicated benchmark that includes still the MSCI ACQ and Bloomberg Aggregate Index, roughly in a 70/30 split for option two. And it adds to it. And it adds to it the State Street Private Equity Index at 15%, which is roughly your allocation to private equity, and 15% to the NACRIF Odyssey Index, which is roughly your allocation to real estate. Option Three has the same four-component indexes. It has somewhat less equity risk, 40% equities and 30% bonds instead of 50% and 20% respectively. So looking at historically how CalSTRS total portfolio has performed relative to its existing benchmark, Options One, Two, and Three, and the peer universe, which in this case is defined as public defined benefit plans over $5 billion in size. As we've noted in the past, CalSTRS returns have been stronger than peers. Over the past 20 years, CalSTRS portfolio and the benchmark returned 8.1% per year. The peer universe of larger plans returned 7.4% per year over that time period. The various benchmarks fall between 7% and 8.1%, or 8.5% depending on the various options. We also show there the historical risk to give you a sense of how the volatility of the CalSTRS portfolio compares to the three benchmark options. From a volatility perspective, Option Three has the lowest historical risk at 6.9%, where the current, the CalSTRS total portfolio is 8.6%. Option One has the highest volatility at 11.3% versus the 8.6% of the CalSTRS total portfolio. I'll highlight that the, one of the primary reasons that the CalSTRS portfolio and Options Two and Three have lower volatility is because they include private market asset classes, real estate, and private equity. On the far right, you see expected risk on a forward-looking basis, which is derived from the same capital market assumptions that you are using in your asset allocation study, and expected returns of the various benchmarks. The CalSTRS total portfolio has an expected risk based on those capital market assumptions of 10.4%, somewhat below the expected volatility of Options One, Two, and Three, and the peer universe. And the expected return is 7.4%, equal to Option One, but slightly below Options Two, Three, and the peers.
Can I just add something really quickly?
Of course.
It might be incongruous that the risk for Option Two is less than the others since they include private markets. But that's in part, in large part, because those returns are smoothed over time. So in fact, it significantly understates historic risk. We're going forward, we're assuming that the private markets have higher risk. And that's why going forward, you see a higher risk there. So it's not inconsistent, it's a different measurement methodology. And that's why historically, the private markets appear to reduce risk when in fact, they will increase risk if you mark them to market the same way you do with stocks and bonds. Sorry for interrupting.
Yep. No problem. So those were the numbers. Sometimes it's easier to look at the data in charts to get a sense of what it's telling you. And we have two charts here that we wanted to present. This first one simply traces the rolling three-year returns historically of all of that same data, the CalSTRS portfolio, the existing benchmark, and Options One, Two, and Three. The point of this slide and the chart is that, except for the early 1990s, they all kind of overlap with each other. And I highlight that because at the broadest level, all that means is that the major exposures and risk factors that are driving the CalSTRS portfolio are driving these benchmarks, too. All of these went up in the late 90s. They all went down when the tech bubble crashed in the early 2000s. They all corrected during the global financial crisis. They all responded in the same way afterwards by moving up. So this tells us that you're in the ballpark. These three potential options are all expressive of the types of risks and exposures that the CalSTRS portfolio has had over time. This chart gets a little bit messier because we look at the same rolling three-year data, but we look at the existing benchmark and Options One, Two, and Three in relation to the CalSTRS returns. And so this ultimately tells you whether or not, on a rolling three-year basis, CalSTRS performance would have been higher or lower and what the degree of that outperformance or underperformance would have been to each of these options. To try to decipher some of the noise in this, I'll draw your attention to the fact that prior to about 2010, you can see that the dotted line, Option One, the 70/30 portfolio, is very different than the Options Two and Three. And that's because prior to 2010, CalSTRS had a much lower allocation to private market asset classes. So if you looked at this data prior to 2010, 70/30, the Option One, was a closer fit than Options Two or Three to the CalSTRS portfolio. After 2010 or so, you can see that the CalSTRS portfolio has done two things. One, the performance has improved in both consistency and outcome. Against all of these benchmarks, the CalSTRS portfolio, by and large, has outperformed for the last decade-plus. That's a really good thing. But what we see is that the variability of that outperformance is much greater relative to Option One because the CalSTRS portfolio looks less like Option One than it does Option Two or Three because of the private market allocations. That difference, we call in our industry, tracking error. So to the quantitative eye, your portfolio has less tracking error to Options Two and Three than it does to Option One. As a final data slide to present, I wanted to give you a sense of how CalSTRS returns would have looked relative to these options during very specific periods in the past. As we've noted, this is a Reference Portfolio and would be used to compare your returns externally, too. And so it's important to know sort of how different your returns could look during different periods. The first period here is the most recent, and we termed it the private markets boom. It was the one-year period that coincided with your fiscal year ending June 2022. During that period, as you know, real estate and private equity outperformed both public stocks and bonds by 30 to 40 percentage points. It was a truly unique period. Your portfolio outperformed very well against all benchmarks. It was down only 1.3% during that period. The 70/30 benchmark was down 14.5%. So you would have outperformed that benchmark by 12-plus percentage points during that time period. Your outperformance relative to Options Two and Three, and for that matter, for the existing benchmark, was less because those benchmarks include private equity and real estate, which performed well. The tracking error was less. You could look at also the COVID market shock for the two months of February, March of 2020. And similarly, the CalSTRS portfolio performed better than Option One by about four percentage points, but matched the return of Option Two roughly, and underperformed Option Three by a bit, again, because of the private markets allocations. On the flip side, if you look at the far-right column, which is the recovery from the global financial crisis, the CalSTRS portfolio returned 17.5%. That was lagging significantly Option One at 43.9%, but was more in line with Options Two and Three. The reason is because coming out of the recession, public security, stocks and bonds, outperformed private market securities significantly. So bottom line on all this data, as long as the risk exposures and the risks included in each of these benchmarks are reasonably consistent with those in the CalSTRS portfolio, all these differences will smooth out over time. But the more benchmarks and the closer those, the more indexes and the more closely those indexes match the CalSTRS portfolio, the closer the returns will be to the benchmark in the short term. And so as noted at the last meeting, ultimately, this is a trade-off between simplicity and precision. That's how you should look at it. And I'll hand it back over to Alan.
Before I close, are there any questions that you might have on materials?
Why don't you close first, and then we'll go to questions. Okay, Al? Thanks.
Number one, thank you again for the opportunity. It really is an important issue. Having a Reference Portfolio would be a good tool to have in your toolbox. The next steps are sometime in the future would be the adoption of a Reference Portfolio for the purposes that are described in the policy. Once that decision is made, then there will have to be a series of possible policy modifications. And then that would be included in your performance materials that you could use for internal or external purposes. Ready to close, Mr. Chairman? Happy to entertain any questions.
Thanks, Alan. Thanks, Crystal. Thanks, Steve. Just to remind everyone, this is solely an information item today. As Steve mentioned, essentially, there are a lot of trade-offs involved here. As I've learned throughout this process, there's also some unintended consequences of decisions that we all make. And we have to fully understand what those unintended consequences may be and make a decision whether or not we want to live with those unintended consequences or simply say, we've learned a lot more about the benchmarks and status quo seems to be working fine. So those are really my thoughts on it today. I don't think this is an item that needs a lot of deliberation today. It was solely meant for education. And I know, given all of our backgrounds, some of us have more expertise in this area than others. So that's a bit of a challenge as well for our board, individually and collectively. But we have a system now that seems to work well, but it's complex. And we have to understand what the trade-offs would be if we were to make any changes and the unintended consequences, and whether or not we want to live with those. So speaking of expertise on benchmarks, let me turn it over to Jennifer. We have a lot of background and knowledge about this.
Thank you, Harin. Thank you for the presentation. Just, I'm struggling, honestly, with thinking about it this way. And if I could just ask a few clarifying questions so that we know how to set it, I would underscore the real importance of the unintended consequences that come out because as is pointed out, there is no perfect benchmark. And in addition, we've got a case where the board sets the asset allocation, but then we're kind of disconnecting this benchmark. And ultimately, we're seeking our 7% return or more with a reasonable amount of risk. So first question I have is, if I can ask three, keep it quick. If it becomes long, let's table it since it's information, if that makes sense.
Sure.
The first question I have, as we think about this, can you give us a sense? Because I would have come, and when we look at Option One, Two, Three, to me, that becomes interrelated with the pyramid that was put in place. At what point do we delegate the decision-making? And can you give us, just as we think about this, a little bit of explanation as to whether you see that as a key variable, the delegation, or not?
Well, one of the goals, as was expressed to us for this project, was to simplify the board's role in benchmarking broadly at CalSTRS. So that would lean towards moving up on the pyramid. And the farther you move up on the pyramid, the less involved the board and investment committee are in selecting the investment benchmarks. From our perspective, that does not mean that the investment benchmarks below those where the board is involved are no longer in existence or in some way less important. CalSTRS and all large investment programs use benchmarks for multiple purposes. And it's important to have benchmarks to measure lots of different things. So for us, the primary purpose of this presentation and those three options that we have there is setting a Reference Portfolio at the top of the pyramid, a benchmark that the board can easily communicate to the outside world, is explainable, roughly reflects the general risks and investment opportunities that CalSTRS is pursuing over time, and isn't complicated by more customization than that. But the other benchmarks, asset class benchmarks, sub-asset class benchmarks, sub-sub-asset class benchmarks, those are all also very important. They will need to be maintained. My best guess is they will grow in number over time because my experience has been that the capital markets get more complex as time moves on, not less complex.
Thank you. Alan, did you have anything to add?
Just by definition, the higher up you go in the pyramid, the more you're delegating the staff.
Right.
And that's reciprocal. It's just really important. And we recognize that. And conceptually, we're completely on board on that.
Great. I mean, just one board member, I'm absolutely in favor that we need to measure the portfolio. We need to measure the decisions on the portfolio, the asset class splits, the manager performance. And we need a prism, in some cases, of benchmarks to do that. In other cases, clear benchmarks. But the higher we go, it seems to align with what the survey has come back from the board. So in trying to be simple, did you consider and reject the idea of some kind of a smoothing mechanism, you know, that would take away some of that tracking error where there to be, you know, Option Three, but have a smoothing mechanism for that of some sort and/or a spread to reflect illiquid assets and bring that tracking error down?
Yeah. So I'll address the spread first because we did model that out and think about that.
Or percentage of.
And at the end of the day, spreads aren't investable. And so the same outcome of creating a spread on a public market index, you achieve by simply increasing the equity allocation of the Reference Portfolio. So for simplicity, instead of having part of the equity allocation have a premium to it to reflect the expected outperformance of private markets, it's simpler just to have a higher equity allocation in general to get you to the same expected return level.
Or a percentage of the public as opposed to a big spread. But anyway, let's, I mean, any, or a smoothing mechanism of looking at, say.
Yeah, so smoothing, maybe if you could clarify that a little bit in terms of how the benchmark is used in evaluating the portfolio?
Yeah. Yeah, if we look at, I mean, we could look at any one of these, but the charts that you have that would look at our expected performance and the tracking error of it.
Yeah. So what you're saying is rolling five years would look smoother than rolling three years?
Because the price discovery for a growing part of our portfolio is more than a one-year return. And that's what is being picked up in some regard as you look and bring in other benchmarks.
Yeah. So and to your point, that using a three-year rolling return here is somewhat arbitrary. We could have used five years, or 10 years, or one year. And the longer the time period over which you evaluate performance, the closer all these indexes are going to look to each other. these indexes are going to look to each other.
Right.
So, we would always, when you're reviewing performance of the total portfolio versus a reference portfolio, we always recommend looking at the longest time periods available as being most reflective.
That goes back to my comment about retrospectively, private markets are smooth. Well, public markets time-smoothes.
Yeah.
And so, effectively, what you get is the benefit that you have in private markets of lack of pricing. The same reality is, in public markets, the longer you go, the lower level, the range will narrow and narrow and narrow. And the difference between public and private markets will dramatically decrease.
Yeah. But I think that also has option one, two, three converge, right? And it would maybe a way potentially to consider to essentially have those converge and keep it simple, if that's what the board has asked for. Is that correct, or?
So, you're saying not in the selection of the benchmark, but in the time period over which the fund is evaluating versus the benchmark?
Yeah, so the board wanted simple. If you extend the time period, it creates.
Yeah, I mean, if the board, and all future boards, said, we're not interested in knowing the return for the last year, just tell us the return of the last 10 years?
No, well, I'm not saying the board doesn't care about the year, but.
But ultimately, that's the challenge, because benchmarks are used to attribute what worked and what didn't work over shorter periods, even though you shouldn't be focused on it.
Let's take this conversation off. I think that's better.
Anything else, Jennifer? Any other questions?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue. Thank you for the presentation and the continued education. And we'll follow up to see which, if any, next steps will be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight on the agenda is the Pension Solution Project. The team could come on up.
Yeah.
Okay, would you introduce?
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Ashish Jain, Chief Technology Officer and co-sponsor with Bill with this project. And I'm very happy to introduce you to Anthony Sweeney. He's a project director, and he joined us now eight weeks, counting. His honeymoon period is over in one day. Very happy, I think, we are very happy. I think since he came, he's making a lot of good connection with the team as well as the leadership. I can go gaga about Anthony, but Anthony, you know, we are very, very, very happy to you here. We have a very quick agenda. Anthony will take the deck, and then we'll take Chris, we'll go after that one. Anthony?
Good afternoon, Chair Kelly, members of the board. Anthony Sweeney, Pension Solution Project Director, and I'm happy to be here for the first time presenting in front of you and hopeful for many more engagements with you on the project's success. I've had two months of absorbing project information and the status of the system. And while it certainly isn't enough time to get a handle on everything, I'm encouraged about the state of the system and what I've learned about the progress and the people based on my previous experience with the Pension Solution Project. I'm looking forward to continue working with our teams to be successful. Just a reminder that we are still in the interim service period, or ISP, as I'll be referring to as I go through the presentation. And during the ISP, we've been very focused on building a strong team and strengthening the foundation of our processes and the system itself. Ashish and I are both metrics and stats guys, and I'm looking forward to when I can provide more statistical data on progress as we enter into the more formal testing and other phases post-ISP period. So, today, I'm going to share an update about recruitment activities for our project team. I'll speak to progress we're making during the ISP on various activities and cover what's coming up for the project over the next few critical months. So, with the addition of new state staff positions, we have restructured the project team to work more efficiently for the duration of the project. We've completed the hires on a few of those new positions and have several recruitments in progress and preparing recruitment packets for the remaining positions. One of the more critical new positions pending recruitment is our state position over the project management office. Our current project management office is working effectively and overseeing many project activities, but we have restructured and added additional roles that would benefit from a project management team leader to further support those activities. We're also identifying additional vendor resources to support our project management office. The state leader position should be posted within the next two weeks in the hopes we can have them onboard shortly after the interim service period is over. As you are aware, one of the major milestones of progress during the ISP has been the resolution of problem incident reports, sometimes called defects. Sagitech had four work streams in which they were resolving PIRs for, and had a goal in the ISP to resolve 157 PIRs on, per average, per month. I'm happy to report that Sagitech has been exceeding their resolution goals for PIRs and, on average, have been resolving over 200 per month. This has resulted in Sagitech reducing their inventory of PIRs from over 2,000 at the beginning of the ISP to approximately 1,000 at the current time. Sagitech continues to reduce the inventory as we prepare for the future phases post-ISP. So, another major milestone during the ISP has been focusing on lessons learned from the project experiences to date. One of the tools used to identify those lessons learned was the Weaver Report, which provided a project health assessment and identified recommendations for the project team to consider for the remainder of the project. We have completed over half of those recommendations, either by taking the action recommended or identifying the action for a future phase of the project for completion by our CalSTRS or our vendor teams. Another effort around lessons learned was the development of the 10 BRICS we identified to strengthen the foundation of our project before we head into the post-ISP period. This slide shows the 10 BRICS, and it outlines the metric that we identified for each BRIC and the current status. So, one of those BRICS, BRIC 7, was to establish metrics so we could measure the progress of our BRIC goals. And this metric just reminds you of each of those BRICS, the metric we established and the current status. As you can see, three of the BRICS have been completed, including the metric effort for BRIC 7, which I mentioned, as well as BRIC 1, which was to develop our test approach during the ISP period, and the system integration test approach post-ISP. And BRIC 9, which was to identify those PIRs that were design issues and needed to be prioritized for our go-live. As I previously mentioned, we're close to releasing recruitment for our project manager, which will be progressed towards BRIC 2, and is the only item that may push beyond June 30th, depending on the success of that recruitment. All other BRICS have significant progress and are scheduled to be completed by June 30th, which is the end of the ISP. As we approach these final two months of the ISP, our focus is on filling the key roles and other vacancies on the project, as I identified earlier. We expect to continue depleting the inventory of PIRs and prepare for the post-ISP testing phases. We're also working diligently on completing a contract that will produce a new project schedule and begin moving us forward towards a successful implementation. By the time of our next meeting, we will be able to share the details and update you on that progress. We are also finalizing a procurement to bring in additional experienced vendor resources to support our CalPERS team with various project functions to ensure our success moving forward. Lastly, I just want to provide you information on technology contracts related to the Pension Solution Project that will be reviewed as part of item 9D. The first is a non-competitive bid contract with Quest, which is a company that provides data center and hosting services for the Pension Solution Project. These services have been previously hosted by Quest, but through a subcontract with our former system integrator. With that vendor no longer on the project, it is necessary for CalSTRS to extend that contract directly with Quest to maintain the continuity of these critical hosting services. Now, we have control over those services and are working towards a solution for hosting technology services in the cloud that will result in a following competitive bidding process. The second contract is to continue the contract of the independent project oversight consultant, our IPAC, and those services for an additional year. IPAC serves as the board's consultant for the Pension Solution Project to provide an independent perspective on all project activities. To close, I just want to assure you that we are making progress during this ISP, and I am fully accountable for meeting commitments and moving these efforts and the project forward. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Anthony, especially for those closing comments and accountability, and also the acknowledgement of some of the contracts that appear in later items that are under consent for addressing some of those questions and giving a little bit more color to those contracts in anticipation that you're going to be asked about them. So, thank you so much for that. We turn it over to Lynn.
Oh, thank you. I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you for a great report, and it's so nice to see you on this side of the river and appreciate all of your guidance and leadership on the project.
Thank you, Lynn. I appreciate all your support, yours especially.
Thanks.
Gail?
Thank you. And I really appreciate all the time you've spent with us, and congratulations. And I do have a couple of questions, Chris, if it's okay with you, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Sure, of course.
Just in terms of this responsibility chart, I don't know if you want to kind of put it up, or if it's appropriate, if you want to do it next time. So, I think what I just would like to set the expectation for the board is that there'll be a really clear understanding of who is responsible for what and the timeline. So, I just, I think it's a point from Chris, if you could just speak to one of the risks when we're managing a project like this, is just knowing those two questions, responsibility and timeline. Obviously, that's what ultimately drives cost and delivery of the system. So, if you could just comment on those things and why they're important to the board. And then maybe from the team, just enough time for the board to receive those documents so they can really get them and start to understand them. And I think, Chris, you asked a question about perhaps the best way for the board to be able to track progress, just so we know about any potential risks that are coming up. So, if you could just address those three things, I think it would be really helpful for the board to hear from you. And then I just have one slight follow-up after.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chris Caboty with GuideHouse, Independent Project Oversight. And you make a good point, Gail. It's critical to have the responsibilities and accountabilities lined out, especially when you have a multi-vendor environment in a project like this. So, if you have vendors providing resources to do different components of the activities, or vendors that are on for a set of activities, say, for application development and testing those areas versus implementation and training, it's critical to spell out exactly who's the final decision-maker, even who's the decision-maker in the room as you're doing those activities, so that it's clear what the timelines are going to be to get those decisions made and who's on for them. Because you end up with conflicts a lot of times. You'll have vendors pointing fingers at each other, saying, we're done, but we're waiting for them, right? It's really on them to get that done or to make that final decision. And so, it's really important that that's spelled out and that everybody's on the same page as far as who the final decision-maker is. And I think I've heard Anthony say that he's taking that on for the most part, which we're happy to hear. But again, it needs to be very clear between the vendors that are onboarded and the actual project team itself. And that's one of the reasons that we've really supported and pushed for a project management lead to be brought onto the team to really help lay out what those expectations are and what those responsibilities are.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And then, I think, just in terms of, for the next board meeting as well, just an update on current progress, I think that would just be really helpful, just to understand the risk we're managing going forward to completion, but sort of the pieces that we've already accomplished and no longer have to worry about. I think those two are really helpful to Ms. Blatt next one. So, I think if, with the chair, I think as long as we have those for the next board meeting, and then if we could just, at every board meeting, maybe just have an update on that, just so we know when the system is coming. And I know in benefits and services, Ms. Bradford asked about a potential app. So, when we kind of like go to the entire timeframe of a pension benefits delivery system, if we could just include ways that we're thinking, because this is, as we start to see more online communication, just to make sure that we're kind of keeping that in mind. Because of the delays, I think technology keeps advancing, and we're still working on a system from five years ago. So, just if we could be forward-thinking in terms of how we're going to actually increase the benefits of the system to our members. So, if that, I don't know if that's all to be answered today, but I just think in the long term, just in terms of how we're communicating about the system.
We can provide you a placemat, you know, every.
Well, I think, yeah, and what I, I have PTSD. I apologize from the placemat, so.
Okay.
But just as long as we are, just because it.
Triggered.
Yeah, it just didn't work previously. So, I just want to make sure that what we're doing, where it's just a, I don't want to spend so much time on the presentation that we're not actually getting the, I don't care if it's written down in bullets. Like, I just really want accountability for the delivery and the forward-thinking piece of this, so.
Sure.
Sorry.
100% agree.
I don't want to see another placemat. It didn't work. But that would be really helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. When I turn it over to Chris Caboty. Chris is the advisor and consultant to the board on this project. Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Keely. Good afternoon again, Chris Caboty with GuideHouse. I'd like to go back to Gail's point a second ago about tracking and measuring. Something that we've been working with the project team on, and that, again, having a team that's able to put this together would help with, really developing a standard set of project metrics that tell a data-based story of where things are versus just talking in stories about where things are. I think in the past, I'm glad to hear Anthony, he and I have talked, and we're on the same page around this. Data tells the truth, and stories tell perception. And I think it's really important that we're showing specific data points that say, this is where we really are, and this is what the metric means, not just, you know, whether it's a quality metric or a progress metric, everybody needs to be aligned on what the meaning of it is and what it says when you see that something's diverging. And that helps you drive the levers that you need to pull to address that, if you start to pull off of your progress that was expected. So, I think that's a big piece of this that Anthony, I specifically, again, it's close and near to me. So, we're going to be working through that and saying, what's the proper way to present it so that it's consumable, but then it also has to be very meaningful and it has to be based on specific project data. So, that's something the vendor's onboard with, and that's something that obviously Anthony's going to push as well, so.
I saw that.
I did. And I appreciate the support there, too, because it is, it's just something to where stories need to go away and data needs to tell the true picture. So, I think we're on the same page there. I can jump ahead, but, and you can see metrics development I have up there. It's, again, it's in its infancy, and it's working through right now. Sagitech does have a dashboard that they do produce that shows where things are and some of the risks that they may or may not be encountering, which is a good start. But again, I think from an overall project perspective, we'll get better. From a future procurement perspective, Anthony talked about it, they're working through bringing on additional skill sets, both from the recruitment side and then external procurement side as well. We're happy to hear about those roles that they're going to bring on. We'd like to see that as. We'd like to see that as close to the end of the ISP as possible to get those personnel in and really get those processes started that we talked about, or at least enhance them. On the schedule development side, Anthony mentioned the goal to get to a schedule for the project, which obviously is key and it's required and we have to have that. Currently, there's a high-level timeline that's been developed in draft and it's been initially reviewed. And again, it has the high-level activities for the project to get to done. In order to actually turn that into a project schedule, we need to see a lot of detail around the assumptions that are built into that to get to the durations for those activities. We need to understand the staffing requirements of those, what's it going to take to actually get those done? And then also what metrics are we going to use to measure them? But from the schedule perspective, we're, there is something that's being developed and so it's, it's in process. Again, there's a lot of things that need to be flushed out in there and that we need to see before we can assess the viability or feasibility of that, but it's, it's beginning, which is good news. And then on the ISP side, you heard when Anthony said Sagitech has continued to exceed or meet their goals for defect resolution and they're working collaboratively with CalSTRS on the system integration testing pilot, which is going to set the stage for that going forward. That's a significant effort and this is kind of laying out how that's going to look and how they're going to do that in the future, which is, is important as well. So that covers my, my part. And again, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thanks, Chris. Any, any questions, comments for Chris or members of the team? Anthony, Sheesh, Bill, anything else that you wanted to add?
Only one thing is Sagitech leadership is here. I think they're very committed. Collaboration is going on very good with them. They are accountable for their piece of it and we are make sure that they are, you know, they are making sure that they're delivering what they promised.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Item nine is the Consent Action Agenda nine A through nine E. Are there any pulls?
We've got some new papers on that thing, too.
Yep. Any, any of those pulled, nine A through nine E, seeing none, consent agenda is approved. Ten is the Consent Agenda Information Item. Anyone want to pull that or have questions around that? Seeing none? Item 11 is the same. It's the Administrative Procedural Changes pursuant to CEO delegation. Any pull on, anyone want to pull that item? Seeing none. Ten and 11 have been approved. Item 12 is the Information Items Referred by the Committee for Board Decisions. Jennifer? None? Thirteen, New Business or Review of Information Requests? Jennifer?
I do have a few of them.
Yes.
Under number two for the HQB, a written schedule to substantial completion from DPR on item four in the actuarial discussions, a larger agenda discussion on evaluating the changes post-pandemic as to the fund. I think that was a wider discussion, but you mentioned you wanted to put it on the work plans for the future. I also have a request that the period longer than the 10-year projected enrollment be provided if possible. On item five, the board requests to meet on SB 765. And on item eight, there was a request on the Pension Solution to provide the timelines and deliverables and the forward-thinking on the technology aspect.
So just on the 765, that one piece of legislation, the, the chair and the vice chair will confer with the leadership of the, with Cassandra and others to determine whether or not we want to have a virtual meeting on that or proceed separately. And we'll follow up directly with the superintendent's office based upon that decision. Okay? So I didn't want to leave the perception that we were going to have that meeting just on that item. Okay? Thanks, Jennifer. Anything else that we captured, didn't, Jennifer didn't capture? She always does such a great job. Thank you so much. Yeah. There's been a amendment to the Education Agenda for 2223. Mr. Prasant will be attending the PPI Summer Roundtable in San Francisco, the amount of $1,500 without objection. That will be added to the, to the record. Okay? Thank you.
In your backyard, right?
Cassandra, you want to add, comment, anything on the next agenda for our next meeting?
The next agenda is just, are offsite in July and we are still framing some of the content, but it's shaping up really nicely. So I look forward to the conversation.
Yeah, we look forward to that as well. Thank you. And thanks, everyone, who's working on that agenda and providing input.
We should just make sure that.
It's in, it's in. North San Diego County in, what are the dates, Cassandra?
Twenty fifth through the 27th.
July 25th through the 27th.
July 25th to July 27th in La Jolla at the Hilton.
Hilton, La Jolla.
Hilton Hotel, La Jolla.
Torrey Pines.
Torrey Pines.
Stakeholders are making hotel arrangements, so just want to make sure they know.
We are in contact with them as well. We're making sure they have all the information.
I knew you were, because you're the CEO and you know it's, I love it.
Opportunity for statements from the public. Anyone from the public would like to address the board on items not before us today?
There are no members of the public in queue.
Thank you. Which brings us to the end of our public meeting. We will adjourn out of open session and in 10 minutes, we will reconvene in closed session in the back. Okay? Thanks, everyone.